Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order and we will start with the roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher? Councilmember Schmisher? We're going to say absent at the moment. Councilmember B. Smith, absent. Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Excellent. Let's all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a list of citizens who would like to address the City Council on items that are not on the agenda. I'm going to call them in the order that they have been received and we will start with Beth Black with safety concerns. Is Beth Black here? Beth Black. Okay. Next, I have Ron Sahoski. Ron. This is concerning solicitors. Okay. Next, we have Debbie Lake. And I believe Debbie and Beth, did you guys want to come up together or separately? Separately? Okay, we'll start with Debbie and then Beth. You will have three minutes.
Okay. Can you hear me? I don't need to pull this down. Okay. Well, I am Debbie Lake. I own Classic Furniture and also the chairperson for our Downtown Business Alliance, which we call the DBA. And we also have a group of business owners and managers that have joined us tonight to address a very important issue that is greatly affecting our businesses. We had a regular DBA meeting in the first of August and Patrick Mulready, our city planner, attended our meeting and was very, very clearly explained the signage ordinances that the City Council passed a few years ago. After he explained it, we opened the floor for discussion. Lots of questions and answers, and he was very good in explaining what the signage ordinances are. Much of the discussion and questions were concerning the feather flags, which many business owners have found to be an effective means of drawing attention to their businesses. We feel that the code ordinances are restrictive and we have seen, many of us have seen, a serious decline in business since we've been asked to remove our flags, our feather flags. We were informed that one item that is allowed is the sandwich boards. And so after talking to a lot of the business owners, many of us have attempted to have the sandwich boards. One business owner told me that a skateboarder took out her sandwich board. And skateboarders are an issue that we still have on our sidewalks. Many times, the strong winds that go through our downtown have blown our signs over and destroyed them. One business owner said hers was destroyed by a homeless person that just kicked it to pieces. So sandwich boards have not been a good solution for us in our advertising. The other issue that we've found to be a hindrance to our visibility is our trees that are on Main Street that are in front of all of our businesses. These trees, while they're very beautiful, have grown to be so big and tall that they cover many of our windows and our signs, our store signs. That is why many of us resorted to using the feather flags because you can't really see our store windows and you can't see the signs that are on the outside of our buildings. The flags are visible to pedestrians as they walk down Main Street, but also to vehicles as they're driving Main Street. The flags draw customers into our businesses that might otherwise continue to walk past. I actually had a customer tell me today that because of the trees and because of the glare a lot of times on windows, it's hard to see the open signs. And she knew our businesses were open when she would drive by and see the flags that would attract people into our shops. So the flags have always helped her to know when a business was open. We feel that it would be helpful before ordinances were created and passed that a dialogue with the ones that are affected would take place. We want to be part of the decisions that you make as a City Council for our downtown. And so we want to be able to help provide solutions that are beneficial to everyone concerned. I appreciate you letting me speak.
Thank you, Debbie. We'll now hear from Beth Catchmar.
Hi, I'm Beth Catchmar, 509 Main Street. I'm also representing the Downtown Business Alliance. And so during the meeting, we decided to form a committee of people who were interested in helping us maybe look at these sign ordinances and make some changes. And so I'd also like to say thank you to Patrick. He was very professional in his presentation of the sign ordinance rules. And I also say thank you because he has now put up on the homepage of the website, a new planning and zoning sign regulations, a video how to deal with them, and a very easy access to zoning districts and sign standard regulations. We're specifically referencing Chapter 17.07 and Table 17.07.040, of which I have provided a copy to the City Council members, which is from Patrick. So every store and business on Main Street is owned and operated by dedicated individuals who have invested countless hours of energy, business savvy, their money, and their dreams to start businesses in the Central Business District. We all take pride in how our storefronts look. We are all responsible for sweeping our stores, cleaning our windows, shoveling snow, planting flowers, picking up trash, and cleaning up numerous other messes that occur on Main Street. Many businesses in the Central Business District use the feather flag as a means of attracting both walking and driving traffic. By using the flag, businesses can shout out to customers a special feature of their businesses or get people to walk in the door. We have provided the council with copies of statements from several businesses about their use of feather flags. This is a brief synopsis of some of their statements. From Brendan Sanchez, Hellfire IT, "The feather flag I purchased has allowed and enabled me to regain my visibility to customers and allow new clients to easily find me." Autumn's Attic, "My sales and the amount of people coming through my door have lowered dramatically since I was made to remove my feather flag. The flag's made a difference to my business." Kaleidoco Stope Inspiration has been using feather flags since 2019. Customers state how they look at our feather flag to know where we are. The feather flags allow customers easy-to-see signs without having to look for address. Squirreld Away says, "My sales had increased 40% the first month after setting out the feather flag. Since removal of the flags, my sales are down 78%." And Sitting on the Hill says that their customers praised their use of their feather flags and they found it very easy for them to find out where they were, especially when they started to roll their donuts. "We understand the necessity of rules and regulations and appreciate the desire to maintain certain standards. However, to simply disallow feather flags instead of seeking and proposing solutions and measures that would allow further use is very damaging. Our businesses, patrons, and communities are the ones who are suffering. Please reconsider this measure and allow us to display our feather flags on Main Street. We'd like to see a moratorium on restrictions through the end of the year because the third and fourth quarter are so very important to retail business sales and a lot of people have suffered dramatically by the removal of the signs in the last month." We've already formed a committee. We'd like to help City Council work on the new signs and ordinances into the new year so we can come up with a solution with input from existing businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Next, we have Kathleen Sturgeon.
My name is Kathleen Sturgeon, and I have been frequenting these businesses since I moved to this county in 2006. I know that the feather flags have worked. Oh, sorry. I have been frequenting the businesses that are still here from when we moved to the county, from elsewhere. Here's what I know about ordinances. When I moved to La Jolla, Colorado to teach in 1976, there was still an ordinance on the books that it was against the law to spit on the sidewalk. And that was not removed. Maybe it's still there. I don't know. It had to do with tuberculosis and so it made good sense. But the trees are gorgeous, but they're huge. So what Debbie was saying, you can't see addresses. You can't see names on buildings. And I just think these people that work so hard to build their business, I have nothing to lose except for good stores to go to. And I would hate to see that come to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. And last, we have Erica Haferkamp.
I have a couple of visual aids. I'm just going to set them up so you can see whenever it's appropriate. Good evening. My name is Erica Haferkamp, and I am representing Dare Print and Sign Company. I wish to address multiple issues with the recent sign regulations with a focus on feather flags. Number one, economic impact. The new regulations have halted feather flag sales in the Canyon City market, impacting both our company and local businesses that depended on them for advertising. I've provided a handout showing our sales numbers for flags specifically, just that one product, to substantiate this. Number two, safety and consistency. The claim that feather flags are a pedestrian hazard seems inconsistent. Main Street's transition from four lanes to two was to provide more sidewalk space for advertising and dining. If feather flags are a concern, then patios blocking pathways should be too. Number three, tree canopies. Downtown's overgrown tree canopies obscure window signage for many Main Street businesses, making alternatives like feather flags vital for being seen. And number four, sign ordinance issues. The 30-day limit on window clings, essential for small businesses, is problematic. Additionally, the 30% coverage rule for emergency visibility is contradicted when full curtains are allowed. With limited enforcement staff, there's a fairness concern in regulation application. To visualize this, I'm showcasing a brand-new business coming into town that's about to open up that obviously has more than 30% coverage on their window clings. And I'm sure they have an intent for using them longer than 30 days for the season that they plan to be here. Sure, absolutely. And when I drove around town, this is not the only one. There's a significant number of businesses, fast food establishments and so forth, that are covering more than 30% of their window space with window cling graphics. And a lot of small businesses in downtown rely on that specifically for their signage. Suggested solutions are to standardize feather flag size and bases, possibly for uniformity. One example is utilizing a bucket that could be hidden underneath an A-frame sign. It's shown here so you can see it. But you can actually hide the bucket under the sandwich board, or you could use a flower pot. That would be a more permanent solution and have flowers around your flag. Number two, tree maintenance, regular trimming and raising of the canopies. Number three, window cling regulations. Please reconsider removing the arbitrary timeframe for window clings and temporary signage. And enforcement, please allocate more personnel for consistent regulation and education and communication with people in the sign industry in town. And in conclusion, regulations are essential, but they must be fair and considerate of the businesses. And we urge a reevaluation to find a balanced solution benefiting the city and its businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. We have one more to address council, and that's Kay Hensaker. Come on up, Kay. You're next.
Hello, my name is Kay Hensaker, and I'd like to talk about the cling situation. We are trying to restore the building that the Republican Headquarters is in, which belongs to Palace Drug. And William's been very cooperative with us, and it's been great. However, the tree in front of our building is so big that the limbs are growing into the walkway that we talked to Dare and said, "It's useless to put a sign up. You cannot see a sign on that front of that building at all." So we decided to go to a window cling, which you can see from the street quite clearly. But now, if you're going to tell us we can only have that cling up for 30 days, then how is our headquarters supposed to let people know where we're at? We can't have a flag now. We can't have a window cling that shows where we are located, and we can't have a sign. Do you have any suggestions for us? Because we have quite a few members and new members that are trying to find us, and they're having a difficult time, especially because we didn't have the cling up until about, I don't know, just a couple of weeks ago, we got the cling up. So now you're telling me, after all that, we're going to have to take it down. And then they're expensive. I mean, clings aren't like 20 bucks that you can put up there. They're expensive. So I really hope you will put a moratorium on this and that we can come to a better solution because we have no options at this point.
Ryan, are you looking up what the window cling regulation is?
Yeah, we're looking at the window cling regulation.
So while you're looking that up, thank you for being here tonight. We really, really appreciate it. I'm glad that you had a good interaction with Patrick when he met with you. I do just want to make a clarification that the feather flag ordinance, that's not a new regulation. It's always been there. So the new sign ordinance that was about three years ago, even at that time, the feather flags were not allowed before that. They never have been allowed. There was just a moratorium on enforcement during COVID, which apparently was maybe a good thing because we realized that, you know, it's something that the businesses really benefited from. I just wanted to make that clarification. I believe that the staff are looking at trimming some trees. They heard your desire to have the trees trimmed up a little bit, so they will be. But have to keep in mind that the public absolutely love those trees. And so we have to make sure that we have that balance for them as well. And I would definitely suggest that you have your committee put together. We always want to hear from you. Let's set a date where we can sit down and talk and have something that's reasonable, that is a benefit for all parties concerned. We do need to keep in mind that we have received complaints about the feather flags, also about the aging and the wear and tear when they get weather worn, and skateboarders, wind, and homeless, they can also be a hazard to feather flags. But those are all things I just want to make sure that you keep in that discussion so that something right and balanced comes out of that. That's a win-win for all parties. Yes, Ryan?
Yeah. As far as the window clings, we'll have to look into that a little bit more. But I think we can have a moratorium on any window clings for right now. But one of the other issues that we had with the feather flags themselves, or most business owners are very responsible and they would remove the feather flags and their bases from the right-of-way. We did have people who called in and complained because they fell and tripped over bases that were left out and injured themselves. And that's one of the concerns with these things being in the right-of-way, especially the feather flags. So that's another consideration.
Just things that we need to put on that list to talk about. If that's going to be successful, we have to make sure that we take into account the safety features.
Yep. To address the comment about the outdoor seating, we do have license agreements with the restaurants regarding outdoor seating that covers, you know, who's responsible and liability and things like that. Whereas we don't necessarily have that with feather flags currently. That's something we could look at as well as we start to look into this. So that's another topic.
To take the liability.
Right. Topic for conversation. And yes, the staff is working, will be working on the trees as soon as they go dormant. The park staff will be working on trimming the trees along Main Street.
Okay. I see that Councilmember Schmisher has her hand raised.
You're still on mute?
Thank you. I took down my hand, but failed to take myself off of mute. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to speak in support of the idea of a moratorium while we have these conversations and while we figure out what the most appropriate way forward might be. If we've had a moratorium for several years now anyway, I don't see the harm in extending that moratorium through the end of the year while we allow these conversations and this dialogue to take place to ensure that we're crafting a sign ordinance that really makes the most sense for our city, for our city businesses, while taking into account the liability issues and some of the concerns that City Administrator Stevens and yourself have raised. So I did just want to speak in support of the idea of doing that moratorium during those dialogues. I also wanted to mention that I had a conversation with the Chamber Executive Director. And as you know, based on the agreement with the city, they're required to track very closely the number of contacts that they have with visitors to our city. And he mentioned something very similar to what we've heard from several of the business owners tonight, that the numbers have dropped off dramatically since they've removed their feather flags. So just wanted to add that data point for council as well.
And next, we have Councilmember Dennehy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I agree with what Councilwoman Schmisher said. And I was recently downtown, just, it was a month ago, and I had called the business trying to find them. And without their feathered flag, I would have never found it. The trees were blocking the window, and I don't know if the tree being cut would even clean it up that much. And I think we got to do everything we can in a safe way, but to help our downtown businesses. I know that you said that other businesses have these signs. That's a different business district. They're zoned a little bit different. But you know what? I understand what you're saying because you're seeing they can have it, but you can't. And if I was a downtown business owner, I'd be furious. I'm not, but I'm just saying. But I think we really need, this is something that we really need to look at, work at. I did attend the last downtown business meeting that they had. I did go in just to sit on it. I was given a phone call to ask if maybe I could attend that. I did, and none of them were, it was a very good conversation with Patrick and Economic Development. Rick Harmon was there, and it was just a good conversation. But I think this is something that we really, really need to look at. Like I said, I tried to find a business called Squirreld Away, and it was everything I could find because it was squirreled away. I couldn't find it. But I think this is something that we really, really must take a look at, not just table this. This is something that us as a council, and I totally agree with Councilwoman Schmisher.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a couple of questions for our administrator. Does, do our current regulations envision the feather flags being brought in at night?
Well, currently, they're not allowed in the Central Business District at all.
Well, under our previous moratorium, let me ask it that way.
I think it was a general practice of the business owners to bring them in, partially so they don't get stolen or, you know, wander off in the middle of the night.
Okay. Let me ask the question a little bit different then. The A-frame or sandwich board signs are a permitted use. Are they allowed to remain out when the business is closed?
They should be brought in at the end of business.
Should be. Is that within our regulations that they are?
I believe so, but I would have to double-check that.
Okay. So one of the issues that I'm hearing is that pedestrians, if a base is left out, or if a sandwich board is left out, there's an impediment to traffic. And I hear that, and I understand that concern. And I have listened to the discussion here tonight, and I was here when these, as several of us were, when these regulations were first established, that was part of, it was a public process. We did have multiple meetings with interested parties, businesses, in discussing these. I know that some of these details are hard to pick out when you're looking at regulations. But nonetheless, having said that, that's kind of neither here or there in the discussion tonight. But I think that I would like to make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Well, I don't know if we can make a motion on an item that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, you can't.
Cannot.
Nope.
Can we counsel the staff to put a moratorium on enforcement until we have further meetings?
So Ryan can correct me if I'm wrong, but is that the direction you've had from council since COVID? It's never changed? We've never gone back to enforcing that?
We just went back.
Yeah, when the emergency order, all of that ended, that's when we went back to enforcement. We did education first, but yeah.
I think you can give that direction. I mean, it's not an action item on your agenda. It's not. But I think in general, we're hearing that you would like us to take a break, and that, I think Ryan's laid out staff's plan to work through this with the community and that kind of thing. And so we'll just take a break on any enforcement for feather flags.
And Mayor Pro Tim, to answer your question, duration of display for A-frame signs is during the operating hours of the business.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone in council want an objection to a moratorium as we have further discussions with the community members? Councilmember Tracy?
I don't object to that approach as long as we have a definite movement forward in terms of having an additional meeting, having it be on a committee agenda and so forth.
Okay. Yeah, it just seems fair. I mean, taking a two-year break, and then people starting to make lots of investments. It's just that it doesn't seem very fair. And apparently, they're a benefit to local business. So let's have an opportunity. We're going to meet. We know your contact information. We'll send it to the main leaders, and we'll make sure that you please take that responsibility to disseminate it to all the business owners as we continue our discussions. Thank you for being here and for being advocates for your business in downtown. I'm Councilmember Dennehy.
And just one more thing, guys. You know, as we're saying this, business hours, you know, all of us can lead. If you see somebody who's leaving them out by chance, just give them a talk to. Just say, "Hey, come on. We're trying to all work on this and make our downtown a fantastic area. Let's all work together on this."
Well, we're waiting until they go dormant. So that's going to be a little bit. Yeah. So we have to wait till there's a proper time that we can do that for the health of the tree. But do you want a notification of when that's going to happen? Is that what you're saying? Yeah, okay. So let's add that to the list and add that to the committee meetings as well to make sure that stays in the conversation. Okay. Councilmember Schmisher, did you have another item? Oh, you're on mute?
Darn it. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would be interested in attending those meetings that staff will have with the businesses if possible. I would love to be invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schmisher.
Yeah, we will coordinate that.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, staff, as well, for your cooperation and helping us hearing it out. It is time for us to move on, though, to council member announcements. Yeah, you guys have a really good evening. Seeing that, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. This is just the agenda that we're voting on and not the consent agenda. This is a little bit different today. So I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Tracy?
I move for approval of the agenda as presented.
Hold second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
All right, the agenda passes. We will now move on to the administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, you have the written report in your packets. There There are a couple of things that have happened since the administrator report was written. I got an update today from the real estate office at Black Hills regarding the Clark Station property. They are just finishing up doing their encumbrances. They've engaged an appraiser that we both agree upon. They're expecting that the appraisal process will take about 60 days, and they will also be doing some regulatory PUC type of activities during that time as well. So we have had contact and an update, so I'll keep you apprised as that continues to move forward. The other item is we have received submissions for the Red Canyon Park Trail Committee. Do you need to set a time for city council to do interviews for that selection of those committee members? And looking for a, see if there's a preference on if you want to do that before or after any of our upcoming meetings.
I like it if we can tag it on to a Monday or Wednesday meeting. Councilmember Dennehy said before works better for him. Is that okay with council if we do, like, how many, how many do we have?
We have five for three seats.
Five for three seats? That might take more than an hour.
It may. One of those, I think, we only had one applicant, and we have for the city position, and there's only one city position, so you're really looking at four for two seats.
Okay, I guess it depends on how many questions we want to ask. But let's do, is there, so we're just going to put on a regular Monday or Wednesday? Is there a preference from council on which day that would be?
Just to keep in mind that the next city council meeting will be on a Tuesday because of the Labor Day holiday.
Okay, well, we've just got to take care of business. Let's take care of business.
We can tack it on before the next city council.
Okay.
The fifth.
Any questions for Ryan from the administrator's report? Yes. 4:00 PM sharp. You think that's going to be enough?
4:00 PM for the Red Canyon. There may be an executive session, but it would be afterwards. It'd be at 5:00.
Yeah, 5:00. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, thanks for clarifying. I'm like, oh, yeah, 4:00, no, it's 5:00.
5:00 PM on the 5th.
Yeah.
For the interviews, yes.
Excellent. Okay, well, let's move on to item 9A, and this is an ordinance referral to committee. So these are not things that we are voting on right now. We're just going to be voting to say if we want to have further discussion on these items and to put them to committee for that further discussion. And that's for three items. One, the use of wells upon connection to the city's water system, contractor licensing, and a shopping cart ordinance. Ryan?
Yes, ma'am. We have three ordinances to refer. The ordinance for the wells, we'd like to refer to the September 20 Vision Committee, and then the other two ordinances, the shopping cart ordinance and the contractors' ordinance, we would like to refer to the general government meeting on September 6.
And
Sure, Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
I would point out that the Water Committee is going to be meeting a week from Wednesday, and it might be appropriate to put that on our agenda for that meeting to discuss this ordinance again.
The Water Committee has already discussed.
Yeah, I believe that was in the notes, that they already discussed it and approved
That is correct.
recommendation for city council to consider it. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand, City Administrator Stevens, that you've reached out to the businesses that have shopping carts and that they've been, that they would be invited were we to refer this to that particular meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct. The Police Department has reached out to the businesses that have shopping carts and invited them to that general government meeting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes, I, my question is similar to Councilwoman Schmisher's. I just want to make sure that we can get, have a dialogue with them before council decides what, or even has to take a vote. I think that there's a lot of issues at work there that we need to, I want to hear what they have to say, what the people, you know, who have, like Safeway and City Market, what kind of, there are probably issues we may not even anticipate because we don't know how their business works. There may be some things that, but I'd kind of like, before it comes up for even a first vote, I'd like to be able to talk to those people, or get a survey, if, you know, Ryan feels that's appropriate. I just don't, it's kind of like with the flags. I think that the store owners have probably issues with this that we don't, may not know about.
The Police Department has had conversations with management at the stores, and again, that's why we invite them to the general government so that they can talk before it goes to council for a vote. The best we can do is have that communication and invite them. There's nothing we can do to make them show up, so.
Okay, so there is, there specifically, the people involved are invited. Okay, thank you.
And you're always welcome to go and ask management to sit down and have a conversation. It'd be nice, maybe nice to have an intimate conversation with them. I know this proposed ordinance has a lot of details into it that might be concerning for some of these shop owners that could be burdensome.
And those businesses do have a copy of the ordinance as well.
And we don't make votes at general government, but that's the opportunity. We have to sit around the table figuratively, but really hash out an ordinance. That would be reasonable. Also say, well, Aaron's here, who's the original person on Main Street, who kind of brought up this idea and the consternations that you've had with shopping carts and homelessness. I have had a lot of complaints from citizens this year particularly. It just seems like all of a sudden, this was the year to have shopping carts just show up like crazy in town. And so it seems appropriate that something somehow probably needs to be done to address them. But I think it'd also be really helpful for our staff before September 6. If we have questions or concerns, let's ask now so they can come prepared and research beforehand so we can really have a good and thorough, robust conversation. Councilmember Tracy?
I'm ready to make a motion if everyone's ready. Can we combine in one motion?
Yes, all in one.
I think I can do that. I move that council refers three proposed ordinances to committee as follows. A proposed ordinance regarding use of wells upon connection to the city's water system to the September 20 Vision Committee, and proposed ordinances regarding contractor licensing and shopping carts to the September 6 General Government Committee.
A second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
All right, we will see these items added to the agenda. Aaron, I would also like to invite you to attend this meeting and come with your research and your, and invite the people that you think are appropriate to, to bring all the parties to the table. All right, we are moving on now to item 9B, and that's the second reading and adoption by title only of Ordinance 8 Series of 2023. This is appropriating additional sums of money to defray expenses in excess of amounts budgeted for the City of Canyon City, Colorado, for the 2023 budget year. Again, this is the second reading on this. Is there any reports from staff or discussion?
This is second reading. We've not received any additional public comments on the ordinance, and staff would recommend passing on second reading.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we pass on second reading. Ordinance 8 Series 2023.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote, please. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
All right, thank you so much. Item 9C is introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 11 Series 2023 entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Authorizing a Transfer of Budgeted Funds Within the 2023 Budget of the City of Canyon City, Colorado." Tammy? Tammy! We need you!
Good evening. So before you, you have Resolution 11 Series 2023, and it is authorizing the transfers above $5,000 within the budget. We have looked at the budget for the, through second quarter and have determined that these transfers are necessary. It, they, these changes do not impact the bottom line of the overall budget, and that's why we, part of the items that were transferred needed to have been included in the original ordinances as the ordinance we just passed. For instance, for water, they had received a grant, and we needed to accept the revenue in order to be able to expend it. And so that had to be done first, and now we're moving some funds from one line to another line that's over $5,000. And so there's a few of those items. You will see those in the attachment in Exhibit A. Total general fund has $14,000 worth of transfers. Water fund has $62,500 in transfers, and the self-insurance fund has $35,072 in transfers. And staff recommends the passing of Resolution 11 Series of 2023.
Are there any questions for Tammy about these fund transfers? I could take a motion. Councilmember Dennehy?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 11 Series of 2023.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
All right, it passes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Tammy. Item 9D is introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 12 Series of 2023 entitled, "A Resolution Extending the Multifamily Housing Development Incentive Program." Ryan and Travis, come on up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution 12 is extending a incentive program that we put in place two years ago to assist with water taps for multifamily development as well as building costs, or building permit costs for multifamily development. We've only had two that have used it so far, the Scholastica Project and a project down on Mariposa. But knowing that we have projects in the pipeline and specifically some state legislation regarding Proposition 123, we do see an opportunity for this program to continue and be an incentive for the types of housing, building, housing and construction projects that we need in the community, and staff would recommend extending this for another two years.
So for the benefit of the public, this extension would reduce the building permit fee by 40% for any housing development between 20 units or more, and it changes the calculation used for multifamily housing to the first unit is billed at the full three-quarter tap rate, and every unit after that will be at 50% of the three-quarter rate or the total fee of the physical tap size, whichever is greater.
That is correct.
Travis, what do you have to add?
I don't really have much to add on top of that, and I think Ryan spelled it out very well.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question. Does this affect, in the, let me back up, in the city administrator report, there's a recommendation that we opt in to Proposition 123, as it will give us access to state funds that we otherwise would not be able to access. Does this, does this proposal, or does this ordinance affect that opt-in in any way, either positively or negatively?
The resolution, I don't think it would affect us, you know, the one way or the other, as far as the opting in to Proposition 123. I do think it makes us more competitive to bring developers here, being opted in to Proposition 123, and then also having an incentive on top of that.
And I did have a question about opting in to Proposition 123. Is that, is that appropriate to ask at this time, Madam Mayor?
I would suggest that you finish with this item, and then if you want to go back to a topic under the administrator's report, you can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so any other discussion? Yes, Travis?
I guess I would like to add that this just extends it for another two years. It would sunset again in 2025.
Well, I'll probably note that, you know, we've only had to take advantage of it, but we do, are trying and working towards, hopefully, luring in some development for much-needed affordable housing.
Yeah, and I think it's important to make sure that we have a sunset in there. We don't, you know, that forces us to look at it on a periodic basis.
Okay. Is any further discussion on this item? Let's take a motion then. Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt by title only Resolution 12 Series 2023.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you, council, and thank you, staff. Mayor Pro Tim Hammack, let's go back to Proposition 123.
Thank you. In the administrator's report, the, I didn't get my hand up quickly enough to ask my question, but we do have the recommendation for opting in. Does this, and we did see during the last legislative session, an attempt by the legislature to overrule local zoning regulations through establishing essentially a state zone, zoning regulations. Does Proposition 123 support, encourage, or promote the proposal to overrule local zoning ordinances?
No, I don't think so. I think it's more of an incentive program. So, you know, if you opt in, you have to work towards increasing the number of affordable housing units in your community by, I think, 3% annually. I don't, it doesn't dictate how you do that. And I think that's what we were seeing at the legislature previously, was really a dictation of this is what you will do and how you will get there. And so this is a little carrot less stick.
Some would call it a usurpation.
Thank you, Catherine. I think my opinion is, you know, I wish the state had allowed Proposition 123 to play out and given more time to actually see those incentives work before trying to pass the legislation that you're talking about.
Thank you for those answers.
Okay. Let's move on to item 9E, and this is authorize the city administrator to sign the Project Lifesaver Grant Agreement. So Ryan, but also if Chief, if Chief is online, let's get him on too, so he can address this as well.
Yeah, and this is a grant agreement with the Rawlings Family Foundation for $7,000 to help support our Project Lifesaver initiative, and I will let Chief Schick talk a little bit about that. Chief, are you with us?
I am. Hello, Madam Mayor, members of council. I wanted to come before you this evening and talk a little bit about Project Lifesaver. We recently, the PD recently launched a new public safety initiative called Project Lifesaver. Project Lifesaver is a radio transmitting and receiving package that helps us find people that are wearing Project Lifesaver bracelets should they wander away and can't be found. These are typically used with folks that suffer from dementia, autism, other, other factors like that that might complicate their ability to find their way home. Project Lifesaver's been in existence since 1998. There's 41 states in the United States that utilize Project Lifesaver, three agencies in Colorado County, Canyon City. To date, there's been about 4,100 rescues in, since its inception, Project Lifesaver's inception in 1998. Currently, we have six units available in Canyon City, and we have recently, in the last couple of weeks, adopted three clients, two adopted three clients, two elderly folks with dementia and one autistic teen. We currently have six units, as I said, in, in our inventory. Before you tonight is a consideration for a grant pursuit that will provide the city with $7,000 and enable us to buy somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe 15 units and some additional batteries, which is the, essentially the only ongoing expense with these packages. We have to replace these batteries every year. So we're, we're looking at $100 a battery, pretty, pretty nominal annual fee. Project Lifesaver, participating caretakers with Project Lifesaver are provided in detailed instructions to assist law enforcement if a client goes missing. Through that training, we establish the protocols necessary. During the training, we also present them with a release, an agreement, that announces that Project Lifesaver is just an additional tool for law enforcement to help find a loved one. It's not to replace any primary safeguards to keep clients from wandering or locating them thereafter. And it also, the contract releases Project Lifesaver and Canyon City PB and all of their agents from any liability if the client is not returned. I've got a, I've got a professional history with Project Lifesaver. We, my prior agency, we use this, this company and this service for about 20 years. And I can tell you unequivocally, when properly instituted, we, it cuts the resources drastically in our attempt to locate someone who may be lost.
Are there any questions for Chief? Chief, for the benefit of the public, if there's somebody who has a loved one with dementia or autism, or another condition where they could use a radio transmitter for location, where, where, who do they contact, and where do they go?
Just contact the police department, and we'll, we'll get them set up from there. Again, this is a, a public serf, public service that we would like to extend to the community with council's blessing, free of charge.
And I, I've seen some of your advertisements or promotion on social media, but for a lot of folks who are suffering with dementia, oftentimes, their, that age group aren't on social media. Are there other ways that we are getting that information out so that the targeted audiences are aware of this opportunity?
We have utilized both print and TV media. And we, we can certainly start getting some flyers up around the city. Maybe put some table tents together for restaurants and things like that.
Yeah, maybe the Golden Age Center might be a good one as well.
That's a great idea. Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for seeking the grant and this opportunity to really help people with loved ones with these conditions. It's, it's really, really stressful, and that's one less thing for people to have to worry about.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Chief? If not, we can take a motion. Councilmember Worthington.
Yes, I'd like to move that we.
I would like to move that we approve the attached grant and agreement. And authorize the. Authorize the expense, yeah, the expenditure.
There's been a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Aye.
Okay. It's time for our consent agenda. It's kind of fun to mix things up a little bit.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 10A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on August 7th and the general government meeting on August 9th. 10B authorizes the mayor to sign a drainage easement agreement for Latigo Lane. 10C authorizes the city administrator to sign a software license agreement approval for Gray Shift LLC. 10D awards bid 52, and that should be 23, city hall roof replacement for, to Whitney Roofing in amount not to exceed $205,040, and authorize the city administrator to sign an agreement for services. Seven, I'm sorry, 10E awards bid 5623 Dell servers to SHI in an amount not to exceed $63,970. 10F awards bid 5723 VMware licensing to Insight Public Sector under the state NASPO agreement in an amount not to exceed $8,865.76. 10G authorizes the surplus vehicle to be declared surplus and disposed of according to city purchasing policy. 10H is to receive and file summary of second-quarter budget transfers under $5,000. 10I, receive and file monthly budget summary for June of 2023. And 10J is to receive and file cash disbursements and P-card disbursements.
Are there any questions or comments from council on any of these items? Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On, just a request, on, when we're authorizing surplus vehicle sales, would it be possible to have a photo included in our packet of the properties being authorized to dispose of, please?
For all items, or just the vehicles?
I'll, I'll let you, that's, the city administrator is welcome to use his discretion in that case, in those cases.
We'll, we'll keep it to vehicles. I don't know that you want software or pictures of servers or laptops, things like that.
Councilmember Tracy.
I had a couple of questions in regard to Item 10D. There was just kind of a wording issue in the second paragraph of the memo regarding 10D, the city hall roof replacement. There's a sentence there, "Bid 52-23 is to tear off and re-roof city hall," period. Then it says, "Tunnel Drive Garage," and then another sentence starts. So I just kind of wanted some clarification on the wording there. And then I have another question after that.
Yeah, Jim Johnson, our facilities manager, do you want to come up and?
I think that was rewritten a few times, and I was out with my, my wife having surgery, so I didn't get to see all of them. But it's really just for city hall. And there was a list of other buildings that SIRSIA had surveyed that is on our policy. So when I filed the claim for the roof repair, they assessed all the buildings. So some of those were on that list and shouldn't have been on this memo. But the only buildings that would, should be is the museum, the incubator building, and city hall, all have the same type of roof. So that pricing would be similar and, and could apply if the contractor comes in with what the insurance appraised it at. If they're substantially higher, we'll just go out to bid with those. But essentially, it's just city hall is what we're going to put on this bid.
Just so I'm clear, you just, if I understood correctly, you said city hall, museum, and incubator building is all that this is addressing now? Or is it just city hall?
Yeah, yeah, because the, the other buildings have a different type of roof, so it wouldn't compare. But those three have an EDPM roof, and so they would all be similar. Though, some of the other buildings have asphalt or roll-type shingles, so we would need to get a different price for those.
So that kind of connects with my other question, and that is, do we, would the process be that this bid then would cover not just the city hall roof, but if these other buildings that have the same kind of roof, that we would use the same pricing in this bid for those buildings?
Yes, per square.
Okay, and then that is acceptable to the bidder and the city and so forth?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you. My, just a further question on this same topic and kind of the, a similar vein. The RFP that went out only was for the city hall roof, correct? So there was no mention made of the possibility of other buildings potentially being used or being a price per square foot, or, or kind of the cost that the bidder provided being used for other buildings? Is that correct?
That's correct. We, we discussed it, since this is all being done with insurance claim money, and we need to try to get as much of it done before the end of the year, since we had to do that budget amendment, to, to use the money that our insurance is going to pay for this. So we're trying to, you know, get as many of these and the bigger projects done this year, so we don't have to carry over those funds to the following year. So they're all similar type buildings, so we, we thought that that would kind of streamline, and we'd be able to get as much of it done this year without having to carry over funds. And then we'll be budgeting for the shortfall from the SIRSIA, what they're paying. There's still money that we will have to appropriate for next year to complete some of these projects. But I want to use as much as we can of what SIRSIA has already paid us for the, the damages to the roofs. So that's.
Completely. Go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead.
Completely understand that desire. My concern is just if, if that language wasn't included in the RFP, then I'm concerned that we did not actually bid out the work on the other two buildings. So I would be concerned about the idea of extending the pricing to additional buildings beyond the, the city roof itself. Could I ask you also, Mr. Johnson, to kind of walk us through what happened with the prices? They changed pretty substantially from what the original bids were to kind of the final prices due to a, a number of different factors. But I think it would be helpful for transparency's sake, if you could just walk us through what happened with those bids. Thank you.
Okay. So when we put out this bid, we had, I think it was 27, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but around 27 bidders downloaded the documents. We required that they attend a mandatory walkthrough on the project to be able to bid on it. So the low bid was substantially lower than the others, so you kind of look at those a little closer, and it didn't have the breakdowns that was required in the RFP. They didn't do essentially what we requested in the RFP, so we throw that one out. So then, we had one that was over $100,000 higher than any of the other bids, so we throw that one out. Okay, so now we had two more bids that were, covered everything. But one of them was, they did an addendum for the ISO board. What we have on the roof now does not comply with the 2018 building codes. Now you have to have an R30 insulation on the roof. So they were going to have to add ISO board. So on the walkthrough, I, I made sure everybody knew that it was a complete tear-off and replacement with EDPM. This contractor only bid to tear off the roof, and he was not adding the extra two inches of ISO board. He did have a, an addendum to it that to replace the, or to add the ISO board would be an additional fee. So that took his bid actually up to $281,000, I believe. So it was quite a bit higher. It was a low bid initially, but when you really start digging into these bids, we really have to compare these things to make sure we're getting the right materials that we've requested, and the documentation of what they're using, the labor, all of that. So that's what we use to compare it. So when we get the initial prices off a bid net, that is just the flat base bid that they submitted. Until we tear into those bids to make sure they, they're all comparable, they'll change on, on a lot of these things. So it ended up, a local contractor ended up with the low bid, and he was well within, you know, the, the locals get 5%.
Preference.
Preference. So he was well within it there, so it, it was a, a good choice to use a, a local contractor.
Thank you so much for that. That was really helpful. I just have one additional question about 10D, if that's all right. I was wondering, city administrator Stevens, would that be in compliance with the city's current procurement policy to extend the pricing from this bid to additional buildings if those buildings were not included in the RFP? And if even the idea of potentially extending this pricing to other buildings was not included in the RFP, is that still in compliance with the city solicitation and procurement policies?
Yeah, I, I don't know that I have the procurement policies right in front of me, but I, you know, if council wants to just award based on the city hall bid, we're, we're fine with that, and we can go out to bid for the other two buildings if we need to.
Something a little tricky about that, though, is that now we already have the pricing of what we've agreed on. That makes it kind of unfair to go back out to bid again because now they know they have a baseline for, for. Unless it makes it more competitive.
And I think, I think that's why we're asking for council's permission to include those extra two buildings.
And it wouldn't necessarily be used for the other two. It would depend on if they come in at a price that the estimate that SIRSIA gave was, because it's, if it's substantially higher, then we've got to budget next year for the depreciation, you know, if, if it comes in substantially higher. So unless they can do it for what SIRSIA estimated it, then we're going out to bid anyway for the other two.
Okay, so we still have some more conversations to have about the future projects.
Yeah.
And, and I'm going to just add real quick. The one thing that I really like about this is, and, and I know we go to bid, but I think it's outstanding that we had another local contractor. You know, as long as we can keep, I, I love to see that, the difference, and giving them just a little bit more of advantage. But I love to see that a local contractor is the one that got this contract.
And I think they'll do a quality job. We feel pretty comfortable with them, and they do quality work. So, yeah, I, I was, I was, you know, you're always happy to do it locally. Helps, helps the economy here, and money stays here, so it's all good stuff.
Councilmember Worthington.
Thank you. I would also say that. I would also like to say that I would like to go ahead with this because with the latest storms in California, and of course, what Maui is going through, price of materials are probably going to go up, and scarcity is going to be there. And so with the city feeling comfortable with the bids they've gotten, I'd like to go ahead with what we have now because we have pricing that is pretty much concrete.
That is a good point.
Concrete and competitive. Yeah, without an unfair advantage, bid advantage as far as knowing pricing. So, Councilmember Schmisher, is your hand up again?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one point of clarification. The reason, from my perspective, why it's not an unfair bid advantage to do it as another bid, and why in fact I think it is unfair to not do it as another bid, is the pricing that folks may have bid on, had they known that there was a potential for additional work. People may, companies may have come in with different bids had they known what the scale of the potential project was. So I did just want to flag that. I also wanted to ask, regardless of whether or not we do approve using the current bid for, I think it was two of the additional buildings instead of five or six buildings, do we need to do an amendment to the consent agenda? In the consent agenda, it has several buildings, the Four Mile Pump Station, the High Head Pump Station, the Low Head Pump Station, that city staff do not believe we should use this pricing for because of, because of the different style of roof. So I did just want to flag that, and I guess seek attorney seller's guidance on whether or not that, that would require an amendment. Thank you.
So I'm not entirely clear. Is the, is the price of the bid, the $205,000 and, or $205,000 and change, the price for the city hall only? Or is it? The price for the city hall only, or is it the price for, okay?
That's city hall only.
Okay, then I don't think there needs to be an amendment, cause that's, that's the bid and that's the bid number in the memo.
Yeah, and the contract just shows city hall. It's just the memo that had the error, not the actual contract. And that's I'm mistaken.
I think though, the, what we would be approving in the memo is two things. One is the $205,000 contract, and, um, and approve the use of bid 53, I believe that should be 5223 for future roofs and replacements in 2023. Um, so I, I'm just not clear as to whether or not that requires an amendment if we are not planning to use 5223 for all of the listed roofs and replacements.
So on your, on your consent agenda, D is award bid 5253, is that supposed to be 23?
And I corrected that when I read it.
For the city hall roof replacement at that amount of money I just, I just stated. So I don't think that you're doing anything other than that. That is the action item on your consent agenda.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is there anything else on the consent agenda? Councilmember Tracy.
Uh, I was just gonna add that if I understood correctly, um, it's kind of this SERSA estimates also play into all of this, that this, we have the one concrete, concrete bid for the city hall roof that we're dealing with on the agenda tonight, but then there's other factors that are playing into the other roofs.
Yes.
Sorry, so I think those other items are not on your agenda for tonight.
Right.
So they're, you can't.
Only city hall.
Only city hall, so you can't take action on the other stuff even if you wanted to. So that's gotta come back to you at a later time.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think we're just looking for guidance. Can, can we use that pricing to bring the future buildings forward?
Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Thank you.
And that's not necess- I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, sir. Not necessarily saying that that's an action item tonight, but we, we are looking for guidance to, to bring that, when we do bring those forward. Do we, can we use the, this pricing, or would council like to see us rebid it?
Uh, the, it, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been my experience, if you have a bent fender and walk into an auto body shop to have the fender replaced, and you're, um, paying for that yourself, you get one number. And if you are being represented by an insurance company who's going to actually pay the bill, you get another lower number. I have every confidence that SERSA, being involved in this process, drives the bid as low as can be reasonably achieved, uh, and in that sense is a fair bidding process for any, any bidder. And if we have an opportunity, uh, based on performance of the contractor, uh, to use that same bid price, I would encourage the city to do so.
Any other comments from council? Are you looking like for a thumbs up kind of thing, or, all right. I'll start with, um, Councilmember Stein.
I think it's, yeah, it's just doing it because, because all that's going on in this country right now.
We need to get it done. We're gonna be an efficient government.
And, and mine's a thumb up, and, and I agree that things need to go out, but in this case, I'd like to just see it move forward, and also, you know, let's get these buildings back. Let's get these buildings fixed. Winter's coming. Let's get this taken care of.
That's a thumbs up from me.
Tracy.
Yes, I'm same.
Worthington, thumbs up. Schmisher.
Um, I would urge the city administrator to review our procurement policies, see if this action is in line with that, and then, um, I mean, that is information that I would like to have. However, I understand that it is a thumbs up from everyone else. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so you have your advisement. Thank you for being here, Jim, to really, um, answer a lot of questions. Is there anything else on the consent agenda that we need to address or clarify, ask questions? If not, I'd like to take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda passes. That is everything on our agenda tonight, and I call this meeting, um, closed. Advert.